Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of June 2nd, 2022. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, to the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township's civic clerk web portal, and complete applications files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of planning board members and board and township professionals.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Here.
Senator Armita?
Here.
Mr. Beeson?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hestager?
Here.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Mr. DeSessa?
Here.
Berchstein?
Here.
Kaz?
I'm here.
Excellent. Okay, first up this evening, we have consideration of the March 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, all members of the board, except for Mr. Scoboe and Mr. Hestager, are eligible.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Senator Armita?
Yes.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Maskey?
Yes.
Mr. DeSessa?
Yes.
Next up, we have a couple of resolutions under consideration. First one is Toll Brothers RBG slash Enclave with a file number of 21-PB-10-S/MS/SP. May I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, the eli- everyone on the board is eligible except Mr. Scoboe, who is recused for the application, and Mr. Hestager.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, okay, any comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Senator Armita?
Yes.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Maskey?
Yes.
Mr. DeSessa?
Here.
Berchstein?
Here.
Kaz?
I'm here.
Okay, any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Senator Armita?
Yes.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestager?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Maskey?
Yes.
Mr. DeSessa?
Yes.
Mr. Hestager?
Yes.
Okay, we do not have any planning board business or ordinances for consideration. So next will be business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any topic that's not on this evening's agenda, feel free to come up. Okay, so no takers. So we will be moving on to a public hearing of this evening's application. KD Hillsborough 441, Inc., file number 22-PB-02-SV, with time of decision of June 30th this year, Block 182, Lot 50.01, formerly Lot 50, and Block 182.01, Lot 1, commonly known as 315 Route 206 and 30 Falcon Road. The applicant is seeking a minor subdivision approval and C-11 variances to subdivide Block 182, Lot 50.01, containing approximately 52.90 acres into two lots to separate the Lowe's building and associated parking directly in front of the building into proposed Lot B to contain approximately 14.11 acres, leaving the remainder known as proposed Lot A, Lot 50.01, with 38.85 acres. No physical changes to the site are proposed on the property, which is in the O2 Office District Zone. Counselor?
Do you need to move the microphone?
Yes, these mics don't carry.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Is that good?
Yeah, perfect.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicant. I think the chairman summarized the application very well. It's a minor subdivision application for Block 182, Lot 50.01. I call these like a financial subdivision, really. There'll be no changes proposed to the property. The proposal is similar to what occurred here several years ago, I think about 14 years ago in 2008 with the Coles. The subdivision is really for ownership purposes only, to have the Lowe's parcel, be a standalone tax lot by itself, provides the owner with some flexibility with respect to the property in terms of operations, finance, and things of that nature. There are no site improvements proposed, so the site's going to function exactly the way that it will today. It's basically an imaginary lot line that'll be, that'll exist on the property. All the access will remain the same, easements for maintenance, cross-access parking will all continue to exist the way that they are currently. Lowe's is on a ground lease. They operate and maintain the property. That'll also continue the way that it is. One thing that your planner in his letter wanted us to indicate was that there are a number of existing parking spaces along the internal access road that are dedicated to the park and ride spaces. Those are gonna not, are gonna be maintained. They're not gonna be changed in any way whatsoever. So the proposal after the subdivision that we're, that we're seeking will have the, I'll call it the mother lot, the main part of the promenade, be 38.85 acres, with the proposed Lowe's parcel by itself being 14.11 acres. With me this evening, I have James Henry from Dynamic Engineering. He's our professional engineer, professional planner, who'll walk the board through the subdivision and also provide the variant, necessary variance testimony for the, for the lot size that we need. So unless there's any other questions for me, I might be happy to call my first witness. Oh, and the only other thing I would mention is that we did review the, the letters from your, both your board planner and your board engineer, and find all the comments, and they're acceptable, and we'd be happy to stipulate to them in the event the board approves the application.
Okay. All right. For the witness?
Can I get the next to the whole truth?
I do. James Henry, H-E-N-R-Y.
Okay. Jim, can you just give the board the benefit of your qualifications as both a professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey, educational background, licenses held, and experience testifying in both disciplines before land use boards in the state of New Jersey?
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Science from Rutgers University in civil engineering. I also have a minor in public planning from Rutgers University, as well as a master's in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I am a licensed professional engineer, as well as a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Also licensed as an engineer in Pennsylvania, as well as New York. I am a senior principal at Dynamic Engineering. I've been with the firm for approximately 15 years.
Great. I ask if the board accepts his qualifications as a professional engineer and professional planner.
Any objections? Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, Jim, why don't we start with getting the board oriented to existing conditions on the site and where the Lowe's is located in relationship to the rest of the shopping center?
Do you want, we want to mark exhibits first?
Sure. We'll mark them as we go.
Yeah, just as we go, I guess this first one will be A1.
Yeah, so A1 is just a colorized version of the exhibits, which I think you have. It's just a colorized, colorized aerial map, and that's dated January 13th, 2022, prepared by Dynamic Engineering. So the client is KD Hillsborough 441 LLC. We're seeking a minor subdivision approval, as was mentioned by Mr. Tuvell. This application includes basically subdividing off the Lowe's property off of the overall parcel, similar to Coles that occurred a few years back. The parcel identified is as Block 182, Block 50.01, and Block 182, 101, Lot 1. So while it kind of, it does function as one overall site, there are kind of two different areas, two different properties on either side of Falcon Road. The property itself, as you can see on exhibit A1, one thing to note is north is to the right on A1. So along the westerly property line is Route 206. Along 206, there's a Dunkin' Donuts. There's also a Staples. And then as you come down to the east, you get to the larger shopping center, which is, consists of the Lowe's. That's located the southeastern corner of the property. There's a Y supermarket in the center, as well as, geez, I was just talking about the Coles. There you go. So the Coles at the, at the bottom right-hand corner. So, so there's obviously several different uses on this property. There are several pad sites on this property, and we're looking to basically subdivide off the Lowe's property. It's really more of a technical subdivision, because the property is still going to be part of the overall center. It's really being done for financing purposes for the applicant. So the, the, basically the parking area in front of the existing Lowe's would be subdivided off, as well as the building, which is consistent with their current lease, which exists today. They're going to continue to maintain the overall parking, parking area. One thing to note, there was, was some recent improvements on the site where there was an application for the Staples property, which is going to be converted to a Princeton's orthopedic. There is an existing park and ride facility, as Mr. Tuvell had mentioned. If you look on the aerial, if you look closely, there's actually green parking spaces located along the ring road that kind of bisects the property. There are, there are basically park and ride spaces, approximately 279 spaces. Those are to remain, those are, remain unchanged. Again, there's no improvement scheduled as part of this application. The road, which kind of bisects the property, does provide access to the cricket field, just located along, just to the south of the subject site. One other thing to note, there are electrical wires, which do basically go across the site at almost like a 45-degree angle from the southeastern corner to the northwestern corner of the site. There are a number of existing conditions on, on the site, mainly regarding impervious coverage, as well as loading zones and the parking as well. So there is existing access on the site. There's an existing access from Route 206, which again is to be maintained. And then there's two access points to Falcon Road, which are to be maintained as part of this application. So under the proposed, so there's proposed Lot A, which is the overall shopping center, which is essentially to remain, and then proposed Lot B, which is the Lowe's Home Improvement Store, which is, again, both of these uses are permitted. There's existing Lot 1, which is located at the top right-hand corner of the northwestern corner of the site, which is a separate lot. And then there's also the Coles property, which is located at the northeastern corner of the site, and that, again, is owned by a separate entity, but that is, that's Coles. So basically, the subdivision is to include the Lowe's property. That property, proposed Lot B, will be approximately 14 acres. The remainder of the site will remain to be approximately 38 acres. This is kind of a unique situation, because the overall shopping center is going to continue to function as one overall property, whereas for financing reasons, you know, it's going to be subdivided. The overall lot area, if you include all the different parcels, includes 57.83 acres, which is just be, below the 60 acres, which is required by the zone. As far as, there is an existing cross-access even, cross-access and parking agreement between all the different tenants, which includes ingress, egress, parking, maintenance, as well as signed easements for the overall center.
Jim, why don't we go to the, do you have the, the minor subdivision plan?
Yes.
And this is exactly what was submitted to the board, right?
Yes, this shouldn't need to be marked.
Just identify the sheet.
Why don't we mark it anywhere? It's A2.
Okay.
And so, Jim, just identify the sheet and who prepared it, if you don't mind?
So it's minor subdivision plan, sheet three of four, and it's dated January 13th, 2022?
Yeah, and Jim, just for the record, too, one, Block 182.01, Lot 1, the smaller lot, is not being touched, correct?
That's not being touched at all, no.
Okay.
So the, the Lowe's property, as I mentioned, is, is at the southeastern corner of the site. I'm going to kind of outline, so everyone can see the property boundary, and then there's going to be a subdivision line, which goes, kind of bisects the parking lot, and then will run along the ring road, as you can see here. So this would be the new parcel created by this, which is consistent with the existing lease, which Lowe's has today. Overall, there is a, you know, the overall parking space, because there is a shared parking agreement, the overall parking spaces, there's 2,665 spaces, whereas, there's 2,665 spaces required, and 2,700 spaces are provided, so it's compliant parking plan, and that's going to maintain under the, under the proposed conditions.
And just like you indicated earlier, there's no site improvements proposed, so there's no increase in impervious coverage, no change in setbacks in terms of where the buildings are located or anything along those lines, correct?
Correct. So the one variance we are here, here for tonight is regarding the lot area. So lot area, as I mentioned, you know, 60 acres basically required, and this lot, lot, proposed Lot B would be 14.1 acres. The other, other variances that are required are mainly regarding existing conditions, which are not going to be changed. I can go through them if you want, but there's several regarding loading, which I can use outline in your planner's letter, which are, again, are not to be changed under the proposed conditions. So there's really only one variance created by the proposed subdivision, which, you know, really, it's a, it's really a technical variance, because if you go there today, and go there, you know, if this doesn't get approved by the board, you go there after this is approved by the board, hopefully. You're really not, not going to know any difference. More for financial purposes, you're not even going to know the difference between.
So why don't you go through for the board, in your opinion as a planner, the positive criteria and the negative criteria?
Sure.
Just for the record, there are two variances, because both of the lots will be undersized.
Correct. The variance applies to both, correct?
So, so I think this, in this particular situation, this qualifies for a C2 flexible C variance. And then as far as goals that are advanced as part of the board, and to be advanced, if the board chooses to grant this variance, goal M is really encourage, which is to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land and development with view of lessening the cost for such development and more efficient use of land. So that, that goal is definitely advanced by this, being that it does, it basically provide more efficient use of land for this type of development, and also it helps basically from a financial standpoint, as well as from a maintenance standpoint of the overall property. Really, it basically gives the landlord more flexibility for financing, listing, and other transactions as well. Now, no variance can be granted without, if it presents substantial detriment to public good, or, or that will impair the intent or purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The first prong, which is substantial detriment, I don't believe this will really give any substantial detriment to public good. Really, the public really won't have any, you know, if you were to just go there, really won't have any knowledge of this taking place. So I don't really think it impacts anyone, and I think we define this fairly unique property in town, whereas this wouldn't be applied to other, other properties. And the second, second prong, which is the impairment of zoning, again, this goes into the uniqueness of this particular property and the overall shopping center. This is a unique situation. There is history that this has been done previously with Coles, and there really has been no, no significant impact or aware of with the Coles property either. So overall, I think this is really just more of a technical issue. It's really for the benefit, I think, of, of our client, as well as the overall town who were to grant this, these two variances.
And the fact that the shopping center will still function as a whole with appropriate easements, maintenance agreements, does that go to your conclusion, both as to the positive and negative criteria, specifically that the, we know impairment to the zone plan?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And the fact that the lot as a whole is close to the 60-acre minimum requirement as well, and will function as, as, does that also go to your opinion?
That's correct.
So in your professional opinion, the benefit of granting the two variances regarding the lot sizes would substantially outweigh any detriment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, you're, oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. I said it in my opening, but you should set that, put it on the record as well. You've reviewed the letters from the board's professionals, the non-heater letter dated May 27th, 2022, as well as the town, the planning director's memo dated April 1st, 2022?
Yes, I reviewed both of, both of those letters, and we have no issue with complying with all the conditions, all the comments in the letter.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, comments from the board?
I just have one question, just for the record. You have no plans to bifurcate the maintenance of the property, meaning Coles will be involved for maintenance of that property, the Y's and F's, so it's all going to be done under one umbrella as far as maintenance?
So this is how it works, based on?
A little closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry, 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 Eric. You don't want Eric to be mad at you. So I got, I got, okay. So the Lowe's is under a ground lease, so Lowe's is responsible for the maintenance of its property, which is part of the reason for the subdivision. The rest of the center is under Kimco, which is the REIT that runs the center. They maintain the rest of the shop, of the promenade.
So that, that plans to stay in effect?
Yeah, exactly the way it is today. That's correct.
So just to clarify that, so you say Lowe's is responsible for its own maintenance? You're talking about the building itself?
Correct, the building and, and the land itself. The leasable area.
Who maintains the parking in front of Lowe's?
That's Lowe's, right? Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the, I'm just looking at the property.
So just, so it's clear, so if the parking lot gets to re, needs restriping, for instance, Lowe's has to restripe their parking lot in front of them, and everybody else gets restripped by somebody else?
It could be coordinated, but if, for example, if there's a, you know, like what occurs in shopping centers in other places, there's a pothole?
Yeah.
Lowe's has to fix their pothole. If there's a pothole in front of Applebee's, the Kimco has to fix that. That's how ground leases work, where they maintain the ground.
And snow plowing?
Same, same thing. The Lowe's would be responsible for its snow plowing, and the rest of the shopping center is, is under Kimco.
Is that the way it works now?
Yes.
Without the subdivision?
Yes, yes, and I can provide, I think that was in your letter as well, Mr. Maskey, was the, the declaration of covenants and easements and restrictions that you wanted a copy of.
Right.
So I can provide that to you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Jim is just giving me the documents. I can provide it to you by email if you want.
So essentially, anything with the exception of Lowe's is under one umbrella?
Correct.
Rest of the property of Kimco?
That's correct. And the Coles is by itself, too, which occurred in 2008.
So the middle striping of, of the development to 206, I guess, is the one that Kimco is maintaining. So Y's to Applebee's, where it used to be, and?
Correct. So, Jim, if you just use your pointer, just to answer the mayor's question, just show.
Sure. So this is real?
And this is the way it exists today as well?
So today, basically, the, the Coles property, I'll outline the Coles property for everyone, so you can kind of see where the property line is. This is where Coles operates. And then, right now, basically, everything to the south of the Coles property is maintained by Kimco, well, as far as ownership. And then there's basically a lease line that, that, that we're following for the subdivision line, that basically heads from east to west, and this whole parking area here is currently basically maintained by Lowe's, but it's, it's owned by Kimco, so it's part of the lease.
Right, and then the, the?
And then the center, the center area, the center parking area I'm outlining right now, under the proposed condition, will continue to be maintained by Kimco, as well as?
Right.
The overall center, which is just to the west of this, the larger buildings.
Does that, does that make it clear? Thank you.
Just one question. So you said, with Coles being separated, but they're still under the Kimco maintenance?
No.
Or they, or they're the same situation as Lowe's?
Same situation, yeah, same situation.
So they have their own responsibilities?
Correct.
So there's three maintenance?
Yes.
Entities that are responsible for the entire plant?
Correct, and there's, and there's declarations and covenants that David asked me for, that I can provide to your, to his office, so you have that on file.
Are there requirements in any of these covenants? So if one of these, if Lowe's, for instance, or Coles fails to maintain, they let the facade go, they have potholes in their parking lot, can Kimco enforce anything to make them clean it up?
I'll review, and we can go over that, but usually there are self-help provisions in those leases for fee, for the fee title owners, in the event that the landlord, or excuse me, the tenant does not perform the way it's supposed to perform.
Okay.
Can you copy that, Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can provide both of you with a copy.
So at the end of the day, then, there'll be three, three maintenance providers covering really four lots, right?
Right.
There'll be four, four lots total on what was the originally sort of one big property?
It was originally, I think it was originally?
Two, two.
Two.
182.01, was it separate from the beginning?
Because even though it's owned by Kimco, it's still a separate lot.
This parcel outside was, it's just because it was, Falcon was?
Because there's a municipal road in between.
Yeah, okay.
Truly?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I don't have an engineering plan, but I assume that the maintenance of the underground utilities was followed the same as it is now storm drainage system?
Right.
Crossing lines?
We're not asking for any amendments to the site plan.
Right.
That was approved by the, by the board.
I have no questions.
So that doesn't affect the, to the west of the property, where those retention basins are on the other side?
No, so there's, there's currently an agreement that basically requires all the other, all the owners basically chip in and maintain that together.
Has that, has that been done recently? Because I know there was a split rail fence along the one property that's in disrepair, which is by the cricket field. It's actually pretty much disintegrated. I know, because that's our township, and I oversee our Parks Department, and we've been trying to get in touch with people to kind of fix it, and it's kind of fallen.
If it's part of our responsibility, I don't know if it is, but if it is, I can be in touch with you.
And then maybe if we could take a look at it?
Sure.
Because there was a split rail fence that went around on the map, colorized map that I see, it's a green area.
Again, if it's part of our?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, because it's, we're not having much.
Yeah, we can, we can, we're happy if that's an issue, we can look into it with?
Thank you.
Eric and David.
If you could just, just make sure I understand where that is on the, on exhibit?
Yeah, it's in the southwest corner, you see the green, by the baseball field.
So is it?
Go, go toward the center of the?
That dark green patch?
Dark green patch.
Dark green, okay, yeah.
Yeah, there's a?
Yes, that's the base, that, that's part of the property, the overall property, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional? I guess I will make a motion open to public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone in the public that would like to question the testimonies of the professional. No takers. Okay, yep, motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That, that concludes our presentation. It's pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah.[1631.23]
the board approve the application as proposed, with some of the conditions that we've talked about, and obviously, subject to your professional review letters.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the application. 22-PB-02-SV, Block 182, Lot 50.01, formerly Lot 50, and Block 182.01, Lot 1, 315, 206, and 30 Falcon Road, to grant the minor subdivision approval. The bulk variance is requested to, and to subject the applicant to all of the provisions of both Mr. DeSessa and Mr. Maskey's review letters, and any and all other conditions agreed upon by the applicant during the course of the testimony.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Make that motion.
You have a motion, you're second.
Second.
You have to read a second, sorry.
You hit the punch.
Okay. All right. Any final last comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Senator Armita?
Yes.
Mr. DeSessa?
Yes.
Mr. DeLvor?
Yes.
Mr. DeLvor?
Yes.
Mr. DeLvor?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
It's good to be back to in-person meetings.
Nice to have you.
I know, I'm not sure what I want to do, because it's so early. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just review the schedule for everybody?
Sure.
We don't have any nights off coming up. So June 9, next meeting next week, it's the continuation of Harvard Way, I believe it's hearing number six. June 23, the business meeting, I would request that you keep that. There will be something to discuss that night. July 7, Homestead Road LLC continues. July 14, we will start the M&amp;M West, also known as Glengarry subdivision. July 28, there's nothing else, a business meeting, and then we're into August. So June 9, June 23, July 7, and July 14, all have agendas on them. Okay. I know for me personally, the June 23, I most likely won't be here. Okay.
I'm not sure.
All right, well, yeah, look at your calendars, let us know. Thank you.
The secretary is the one that's going away.
Secretary, you may be running the 23rd.
We'll talk later.
You think you have a funeral to attend that night?
What's the application on Tuesday?
We'll say.
Okay. All right, so with that, yeah, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Good night, everybody. See you next week.